Can we all stand please for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up on our agenda is roll call. Board member Allen?
Here.
Board member Butts? Board member Gesund?
Here.
Board member Krug?
Here.
Board member Euler?
Here.
Alternate Ward?
Here.
Board member McAlpine?
Here.
Chair Evans. Okay, so next up on our agenda will be the approval of the agenda. Everyone should have it in front of them. They're just three items.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Butts? Oh, I'm sorry. It's okay. Gesund?
Yes.
Krug?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
Next up is the approval of minutes from our meeting on February 10th, 2020. You all should have a copy of the meeting minutes as well. If you've all had a chance to take a look at them or if you have not, if we could quickly glance at them and see if there are any changes, additions, or revisions that we need made, if not, we will take a motion to approve those as well.
So moved as presented.
Support.
Give it to her.
Krug?
Yes.
Euler?
Wasn't there, I think I have to abstain, right?
Ward?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Gesund?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
Okay, so first up on our items on the agenda this evening is the master plan, community engagement activity for the master plan and update on future community engagement activities.
So I've provided a brief memo in your packet related to the public engagement activity. And what we're doing is the Community Development Department, myself, our consultants that we've retained for this project, Carla Wortman, we are embarking on a very thorough community engagement campaign wherein we have a number of boards. We're going to see all the boards and commissions and getting their input on what they want to see in the master plan, things that they feel is important to them. This activity has been done at the Parks and Rec Board, the Tree Board, the DDA Board. As of now, we have plans to go to all, oh, and Planning Commission, to go to all of the other boards and commissions in the community as well. In addition to that, we are holding stakeholder interviews here at City Hall. We've already done the first round. We're having the second round later this month. We are talking with PTA groups. We are going to the high school and engaging the youth there in a discussion during one of their class periods. I will be going to Oxford Towers and talking to the senior citizens there. In addition to these kind of pop-up activities that we're talking about, we are also going to be having booths at various summer activities, Berkeley Days, Street Art, Street Fest. And we will be hosting a number of workshops, a three-day workshop and a three-day charrette, one in May and the other one closer to September. There will also be a community online survey, which will be circulated hopefully at the beginning of August, and that will run for approximately two months. The last activity that we're doing is we have boards up at, or poster boards up at, here at City Hall, the Parks and Rec Department, and over at the library. And they're asking two very simple questions. What do you like about Berkeley and what could be better in Berkeley? These two questions are kind of a condensed version of this activity that we're going to be doing tonight. But these are some of the activities that we are doing in order to make sure that we garner as much community feedback as we possibly can. We want to go to and talk to people when they're already coming out of their environments and they're coming to City Hall. So these are some of the things that we're doing. So we'll just get started on the activity. If there aren't any questions about the engagement activities that we have forthcoming?
Proceed.
Okay. So we're asking four questions about tonight. What do you like about Berkeley? What would you like to see improved? What do you think should be changed? And what do you think is missing? So first question, what do you like about Berkeley? What are things here that gravitated you to move here or things that you like about it that you haven't seen anywhere else and you would never want to move anywhere else? Just shout them out.
Safety and security in the neighborhoods.
Excellent school district. Engaged, excellent engaged school district. I like the neighborhood feel of Berkeley, that it's more of a neighborhood than a quote-unquote "city," that it's very community, centered around the community, the parks interspersed within the community is, it's very welcoming. And the walkability around the city is, I walk a lot, I walked here tonight, and just the walkability around the neighborhood.
That was exactly what I was going to say, but I'll take it a step further. I think the way that the city is organized right now, the businesses, the stores, the restaurants, all have been very nicely intermixed in the neighborhoods as well. They don't, they're not separated, they're just, they're fit in. So I think to your walkability point, they're still easy to get to.
Yes.
So I consider them part of the neighborhood as well.
I think I like the neighborly feel of Berkeley. On my street, it's a fairly long street, and there's only one neighbor that we don't know, and he doesn't know us because he just never comes around. But we have a block party every year, we watch out for each other's homes and each other's kids. And it's just, it just puts me in mind of where I grew up in the '60s, in Lansing.
I think the homes are well-maintained and are kept well by the residents, very important for property values.
I would echo a lot of what's said. One thing that hasn't been said is, and this might be something that is more useful to advertise to other communities, is just the location. I think it's probably the most central town in all of Oakland County. And not only that, it's also central to the seat in Macomb County and in Wayne County. It's just about the most equidistant place in the tri-county area.
I think just the great small-town life. I was born and raised here and still here.
If I could add on to what Mr. Euler said, that centrally located, that we are so close to all of the key freeways that enable residents to have jobs in Macomb, have jobs in Wayne County, have jobs in Oakland County, that it really makes for easy commute because it is the center of where the freeways intersect. I also love our library. Matt Rich has done a phenomenal job of making it a very welcoming place. Whenever you go in there, you see people sitting and reading and using it maybe just more as a destination than I think they used to do. I like that it's accessible as well, easy to get into. I like the variety of programming that they have as well.
Okay, great. Okay, second question. What would you like to see improved? What's something that you like about Berkeley, but if it just was a little bit better, just a little bit more, it would be outstanding?
The sewers, the sewer system. If we could get that under control, I think that would make our city so much better.
Well, this is more from a zoning board member perspective than a resident, but we have seen, in the three and a half years I've been here, we have seen a lot of variances related to the 15-feet side yard setback that a lot of the existing homes don't meet in the development of new homes. Or even when a home is demolished for whatever reason, fire or whatever, that it's an existing issue that we seem to keep on running into. So that needs to be addressed somewhere.
I'd say even to that point, yeah, is how do we better integrate new builds and new construction so that the neighbors, the surrounding neighbors, aren't impacted? I think we're doing a better job, but you still continue to hear about people that have issues with, you know, whatever, the rain coming in, the readjustment of leveling and things like that. So that people would be more open because they don't have that fear that it's going to ruin their house when someone builds next to them.
I really like the diversity of the shopping here, but unfortunately, the west end of 12 Mile Road is not inviting at all.
Neither is 11 Mile Road between Coolidge and Greenfield, particularly as you get closer to Greenfield.
Boy, you got that right. That's my neighborhood.
And a lot of those, I don't even know if some of those businesses are, they look like they're vacant buildings. Some of them have signs that look like they were put up in the '50s. Just a thought.
Yeah, okay. So what do you think should be changed? What's something that is currently happening, currently going on, something that is in current practice that you're not overly thrilled with and you'd like to see changed or altered?
Something that I'd like to see changed as we approach the master plan thing, there's been a push over the last few years to be maybe a little more towards doing revolutionary change as opposed to evolutionary change. There was a lot of public backlash over some of the changes in zoning, on future zoning that were being proposed. And I think this process will help us, help keep us from doing that because the community at large will tell us what they would like to see in the master plan. That wasn't done in the past. This is a great step forward.
I would like to see Coolidge go back to four lanes as opposed to one lane in either direction, along with a bicycle path on either side. I was disappointed with the speed in which the change occurred. And I just wonder if the residents had enough time to provide input.
Anything else on that one?
I think that maybe more specifically, some of the parking requirements for businesses, probably both on 12 Mile and 11 Mile are problematic. I think we've had some cases where businesses have suffered and potential businesses have suffered, which I think would be beneficial to the community based on the requirements of what road you can go across, what road you can't go across. And I'm not sure I know the exact answer sitting here, but I think that's something that probably could be changed.
Well, to that point, I think people's methods of transportation to get to some of these places have changed, and I don't think we've adjusted for that.
Yep. I brought it up at the last meeting with the minimum square footage of houses. That was not really indicative of what the majority of this town is in terms of square footage. And I think you addressed the fact that that's actually going to be looked at in the master plan. Because I'm concerned about not so much somebody moving into town and not being able to buy anything smaller than 1,200 square feet. What I'm most concerned about is somebody that loses their house in a fire or a natural disaster and is forced to come to the zoning board of appeals to rebuild what they had.
Especially based on a square-foot basis.
Yes.
Okay.
I thought that we were going to look, or during the master plan review, at the side yard setback issue to see if perhaps we want to have our residents have the opportunity to be able to use their home to the highest and best use. And with some of the cases that have come before us in the last year, I don't think we are giving our residents the opportunity to use their homes to the highest and best use for them. I'm going to go a different direction that may be somewhat unpopular, but I know of a specific family who has spent the majority of their military career, or the majority of their work-life in the military, have moved to the city and now at a point because they have four children that they cannot find a house to live in. And they had made a commitment to their kids that they would not move once they got here. And now they are in a position where after months and months and months of looking, they can't find a home. So their only option is to move out of the city, and they don't want to leave the schools, which I think is extremely unfortunate in their case. So while I appreciate we have to figure out how to make it all work, that's also another situation, I think, that is just, if we could change that, if we could figure out a way to make that work. I don't know what the answer is, but...
If I may, what was the reason that they couldn't find a house here? Was it housing affordability, lack of stock?
Lack of stock.
Lack of stock.
Lack of stock. So, I mean, I know we have certain requirements in which we need to build, but some people need a bigger house.
Yes.
And if there's not a house available, and the neighboring city does not want to, you know, let them stay in Berkeley, it becomes problematic and they're a great family. And I'm sure that that happens to other people as well, so...
I know this subject was unpopular with the planning commission, with the generators and the air conditioning units. One of the things, I think we need to put our eyes back on that prize, and I don't think it should default to us as opposed to having some rulings in place.
This is somewhat of a, I don't know if I'd call it a personal thing, but I think there, particularly the Parks and Rec Department, there could be better communication with residents in terms of some of the way they do things and the way they initiate projects. And Dennis is familiar with what I'm speaking about. And in particular, there's a real impression on my entire street that the dance club of Berkeley basically kind of almost took over city government effectively and put in a batting cage, the baseball field, which is directly across from my porch, and it's all I'm going to be seeing. They didn't tell any of the residents they were going to do it, they just started building it. And not only that, but it's been built incorrectly. It's basically been sitting in disrepair for about six months now. There are rolled-up pieces of astroturf that look like, well, they look terrible. They put the posts in on the wrong side, and they moved them. And they've had this unfinished project kind of just sitting there that they started in front of the residents for six months.
One last item that I'd like to add on to what Mr. Euler said. Again, as part of this master plan overview, that we were going to look at parking behind the buildings, especially along 12 Mile and Coolidge, and I'll say even 11 Mile. There aren't that many public areas, restaurants, and shops and things like that. But certainly along 12 Mile to look at perhaps a better way to view the issue of parking. Again, so it does not infringe upon the neighborhood, but yet allows potential business owners to see Berkeley as the jewel that it is.
And last question, what do you think is missing? What is something that you would like to see either implemented or started or built here? What's something that you think is missing?
I'd like to see from a more general standpoint, I'd love to see smart houses, the zoning and requirements for building to allow for solar roofs, smart energy, that sort of thing added into what new builds. It's not necessarily a requirement, but at least the framework of what would be needed if that was put in.
There's definitely something missing where the ice rink used to be. There's a big space there. The parking lot is more or less decaying. City services are being used to plow it. The last, when we did have, we didn't have much snow, but there's a mountain of snow and dirty snow that's just kind of there where teenagers are kind of like hanging out and doing things that, I don't know. So I'd like to see some sort of community center or something built there with all that space in the decaying parking lot.
I agree.
The, one of the things that I'd like to see us put some effort forward to address the aging-in-place concept, there really is, that concept really doesn't exist in Berkeley. If people need to retire because they can no longer take care of their homes, there's no place for them to go here. I'm a big fan, a big proponent of tiny slash small houses, even if it's detached condominiums. So these people can age in place and not worry about the maintenance.
I agree. I would like to see some type of housing that would be available for seniors, similar to the villages over in Royal Oak or some of the other detached homes where people that are one-story, where people can remain in Berkeley, have their friends, have their activities, and yet have a safe environment in which to live. Many of the homes in Berkeley, not all, but many, are two-story. And as one ages, it's a little more difficult to get up and down the steps.
Anything else from anybody? Okay. Well, if you think of anything else between now and, we're going to be doing these engagement sessions for the next couple of months, so if you think of anything, feel free to stop by either City Hall, Parks and Rec, or the library and put your comments on the board. You can always email me. And then, like I said, we're going to be having, the survey should be going live the first week of April, as soon as we get that approved. And then we'll be having, engaging in workshops and then a charrette later on in the summer. So there'll be more opportunities for you to voice your thoughts and opinions.
So is there any thought to going to places like the Legion and the Knights of Columbus and some of the, and Las Vlade as well, because some of these people just might not be in those places, I don't know.
That's a good point.
Even maybe a poster or something in some of those places could be good, just to...
Okay. That's something, I'll reach out to them.
Also, with warmer, nicer weather coming up, perhaps a community picnic that would engage the entire community.
Well, that's where the Berkeley Days, you know, we're going and we're having a booth at those places so that people don't feel like they have to come to an event that we're hosting, but we're going to be there and, hey, while you're here, let's talk about this. What do you think about this? People are a little bit more apt to come to those types of things anyway than coming, you know, to come talk to us about the master plan kind of thing.
I'll use my intermediary to send messages. My wife's an intermediary.
Thank you very much.
Next up on the agenda is elections, the election of a chair and a vice chair. You all should have received the email message from Paul. He was unable to attend the meeting today. I can read it into the record. It was sent to Aaron on Friday, March 6th. It says, "As you know, I am unavailable to attend the ZBA March meeting due to professional code enforcement training out of town. The experience of serving as ZBA chair or vice chair has been extremely educational and rewarding for me. I equally welcome reappointment as the ZBA chair or vice chair or support another board member who desires the role. Please share my thoughts at the meeting. Thank you, Paul." Which we obviously just did, so... So I think at this point, the appropriate thing to do is, obviously Paul is not here, and myself as the vice chair will step down from our positions, and then we will take nominations and then reelect folks serving in the chair and vice chair positions. I guess I would reappoint Paul, because I think he does a fabulous job and... I would nominate Paul, yes. And I'm sure he would accept his e, if he was here, so...
Yeah, I would go for Sue for vice chair again.
I would support that as well.
Yes.
Thank you. Can we call the question?
Yep, ready to call the motion? Let's see, where am I? Euler?
We have to do, yes on both, but I don't know if we're doing...
We can do them both at the same time.
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Gesund?
Yes.
Krug?
Yes.
Ward? Yes. McAlpine?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, my template's all discombobulated now.
And then the next thing is number three, discussion regarding our rules and procedure. Congratulations, Madam Vice Chair. Thank you. So I know we've gone through these.
A brief finish.
I believe we're at a pretty good point. Is there anything else that, in the time since we've last discussed, that we see needed to be changed or revised?
I'm going to ask Dennis to explain this further, but the city is going to have their second reading of new legislation that makes some of it redundant with what we have in here, where we could just say per...
Defer to or something, or refer to.
Dennis, you want to, this...
Yeah, it was, the recent council meeting was approved, the first reading of a minimum attendance requirement. That is, if they miss, someone misses four consecutive regular meetings or 25% of the meetings in a fiscal year, unless such absences have been excused. So that will go to the second reading in our March 16th meeting, and if passes, then becomes law 30 days later. Actually, this part doesn't take effect until July 1st, starting the attendance, you know, at the start of the fiscal year, since it's fiscal year to fiscal year.
And I think if this would remove some of the verbiage that's in the...
Which section are you looking at, Mr. Brown?
I got to find it, hang on here.
Is it section four or five with regard to quorum?
No.
As we're looking for that, though, does it make sense, because that will not take, like, how would you reference that in the rules of procedure if technically it's not voted on and it doesn't take effect till July? I don't know if we're better off to delay...
Yeah, I think we...
...this approval till the next meetings that we know. we know it's in there? Or are we better off to pass it as we have it now, and then when our next review, we could defer to that language?
I think the current rules that we have regarding attendance would be in effect until the July meeting when the attendance rules that the city council is passing would go into effect.
So, maybe we could just put a clause in there that these will be the rules unless something is...
Changed.
Yeah. Unless there's some kind of directive or understanding of that based on coming from the city council or something like that that just allows us to...
Unless overridden by local ordinance or...
Because I think that kind of makes one work and then the other... And then it just gets cleaned up with the next provision to take out some of that language.
That works.
Yep. I think that's...
I could support that. Yes.
Because I don't know, like, then it becomes a little questionable. And I think we've worked very hard to make it not questionable.
Yes.
Well, I think these are really good. This is a good format for procedures to follow for this board.
So, then do you... Are we okay to make a motion to approve them? Or do you want to revise that and have us come back and talk about it?
I can revise it, and we can bring it back next month.
That'd be good.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's fine. I'm fine with...
Find a way to pare it down, yeah.
Okay. So, do we need a motion to do that or just...
No.
Okay. Okay. Next up is, do we have any other business to report on?
I'd just like to thank the city staff and the city clerk's office, and especially the election workers, for a very well-run election yesterday for the primary election. And I'd also like to thank all the citizens in Berkeley that did come out to vote.
And worked or did whatever they did.
Yeah. Whether you came out to vote yesterday or voted absentee, thank you.
The liaison report, sir?
Yes. We haven't had a city council meeting since our last, so I have nothing on that matter. But I do want to give just a very brief coronavirus update. So, the city is going to continue to keep everyone up to date as new information becomes available. But the highlights of the most important things you can do right now are stay home if you're sick, wash your hands frequently, and don't touch your face, which I found myself all this entire meeting. Stop it.
The more you think about it, the more you want to do it.
But if you do have any questions, the best source of information is the county health department. You can get to them at oakgov.com/health. You can also contact the Oakland County Nurse on Call. They're available Monday through Friday, 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Their number is 800-848-5533, or email at noc@oakgov.com. Again, 800-848-5533, or noc@oakgov.com. That's all I have.
Councilman Henan, do we have a resource team for COVID-19 that is monitoring and making recommendations to the mayor and the council?
Yes. Where the city staff are doing it, and they're working closely with the county. And locally, the county is really who is in charge of health issues, but we are in frequent contact with them, and council is being kept up to date, and, you know, as well as staff preparing plans and contingencies and so forth.
Thank you.
I think it's going to be challenging.
We will push through.
Exactly.
Yes.
Next up would be public comments, but we have no one in the audience, so I will move to adjourn the meeting at 7:34.
Support.